All right, I'll call the town back and plan the board meeting for July 3rd, 2025. For order, and I guess we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge this to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And it looks like both alternates, Tucker and Roger, will be voting tonight. And I guess first, first item is the minutes from June 12th.
Let me just review them. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 12th as written.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, all right. And tonight we have a public hearing for the daycare of Emily Coby on 1149 H Road. Tell Emily if you want to, if you want to just come up to the podium and give us a quick rundown about what you propose. We'll see if there's any comments from the audience.
Um, yeah, so I am proposing to open a childcare center that's nature based located at Romack Orchards um, in a bunkhouse, um, thirty-two by thirty size building, existing kitchen and bathroom. Um, sits unproductive storage right now, um, with the plans of a full renovation. Um, in partnering with United Way and Coastal Enterprises, um, with the business to help.
And um, we have just a couple of questions to help uh, eliminate some of the details. How many kids do you uh, plan on that now?
Um, to start, depending on the demand, um, it'll just be me as an employee most likely to start depending on how spots fill. Um, and with communication with the state, with the age group that I will be advertising for to fill spots, I can have up to eight kiddos with just me. And then if I keep that same age group again and I'm able to hire someone down the road, then I can double the amount of children in that size building. So I can have up to twenty kids max with the size of it right now.
All right, well, I guess I'll open it up to the public if anybody has any questions or comments about the uh, proposed daycare of Romack Orchard. All right, well, seeing none, I guess we'll uh, close the public hearing. And uh, go on to questions, questions from the board. For uh, ten reasons she's, which all there is on the agenda to me. We did have a site walk on June 26th. And I was uh, I wasn't able to attend, I wasn't.
That's good. Yeah, no, uh, just to expand, the uh, the footprint of the building isn't going to change, you're just going to renovate it?
Yeah.
As is, yep. Very good. Um, I didn't get the, what's the wa- plumbing idea or solution there?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Once um, renovations can, yeah, kick off and I, you know, codes involved and all of that. Um, I'll know then, but I don't, yeah, I don't have a plan for plumbing just yet. That would come with the renovation.
Sure, sure, sure. No, come through the, come through these offices.
There's a well there though, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
You're not relying on the platform?
No, no.
No, not the big tank in the back, not the water supply, that's right.
Do you have any kind of an estimated schedule you're working by at all?
Um, yeah, um, I'm thinking to best accommodate working parents. Um, you really don't see daycares that stay open late enough, so I was hoping to do um, six-thirty in the morning to six P M. Um, and as far as like opening the daycare, I was shooting for September 1st, but that is like the best case scenario, so probably not, but that was my goal, so.
Ambition's good.
Yeah, to be hopeful, that's right.
Can you describe the two trees you're taking down to the board and the reason?
Um, there's one tree in front of the bunkhouse, um, that is very large. And the roots will eventually compromise the leach field, so to prevent that, we're just gonna take that tree down. And then there's a cluster of other trees that will come down that would pretty much hang over where the playground's going to go. So for safety reasons, obviously, those will be coming down as well.
And when you enter Romack, the building that you're proposing is on the right-hand side of that main drive? And you'll have a parking, designated parking area designated by signage allocated for specifically for the eight?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, eight, eight children that you'll be taking care of that day. And it'll be clearly distinctive between that side and the Romack uh, business side.
Yeah, and the orchard is only open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday during the week and open ten to two. So yeah, clear signage, um, and the road that goes to the orchard forks off in a total different direction.
Right.
Um, and Will has a ton of signage that shows like where Orchard Parking is and all have professional signage done too.
Dig inflection, yeah.
Yeah.
And your lot was gonna accommodate how many vehicles?
Eight for right now. Obviously with room to expand. Um, if I had to expand the bunkhouse at some point down the road, then I would do that.
So just to be clear, there won't be any walking of people across the road into the ghost of the orchard, right?
No, no.
You have any questions?
No, go ahead.
There's one administrative thing. We have the deed, but the deed is in the name of uh, who is it?
Will.
Well, it's not in Will's name, that's why we need something, you know, it's the LLC.
Uh, Lakeview, yeah, that's his business name.
Right, so we just need something that says he can speak for that.
He signed on something, to make permission.
Yeah, but the deed, yes, he's authorized her, but we don't know. I mean, maybe conal, but we need something that says he can speak for Lakeview Orchard, who's the owner. It's just administrative, but it should be in the file.
It's by a piece of paper that's in with the Romack Orchard's title would be somewhere, right?
Yeah.
I would, I would imagine.
Pretty easy thing to do.
Yeah, something to pull up.
Okay, yeah, I can, it's probably right up, that sounds down the road, so.
Yeah, we just need that in file.
So I just need something that said, has his name on it specifically?
Yeah, there's, you probably have some organizational paperwork of,
Okay.
Orchard that says, it says, you know, I'm the boss, I'm the president, whatever it is, so he, you know, it's him, but we just have some, have to have something that says he can speak for that company.
Okay.
And that's just so there's a clear line.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm sure, and obviously it exists somewhere, otherwise you wouldn't be able to work there.
Yeah, yeah, I would, yeah, I would assume in the mortgage docs and all that, but I could probably grab something like that.
Yep.
Okay.
Refresh my memory on the discussion of the septic. It's twenty, it's pretty old.
Yeah, so it was functioning seven years ago when um, Three Rivers Land Trust did the um, trail. Um, and since then, it hasn't been used. Um, so with renovation, I was going to do a septic inspection. Um, and per the state in the fire marshal's office, there's a ton of regulations that I'm gonna have to follow, and that's definitely one of them. Um, so the first thing when I do acquire the business loan was to assess the well and the septic first. To see eventually if it's gonna need a whole replacement or if it's fine the way it is.
The state requires you to do a water test?
Yep. If it's a private water source, which it is, so, yep.
Where's your signage, signage for the daycare gonna be?
Um, entrance and then all just along the road that leads up to it. And then just signage, and then do a big sign on the front of the bunkhouse. And then um, I was probably gonna put you back off of all of his signage, um, and kind of stick mine like this.
I did have a quick question just about the like uh, schedule of spraying for maintenance of the orchard. I didn't know if there was, um, maybe we could get some sort of condition that stated that, you know, that the orchard wouldn't be sprayed while the kids were at the daycare?
Yeah, no, that definitely, and he, he doesn't spray, they spray right before dark and there's reentry with pesticide. Um, and they, he, we've already talked about that because I had a feeling that was gonna be a question. Um, so he's gonna shift his spray schedule um, for weekends. And then during the week, if he has to do it, it'll be time right, so reentry, I think it's only eight hours. So if he sprays, you know, six o'clock, then by the time the daycare opens it, he is fine to enter. And the bunkhouse is so separate from the trees that he sprays, so shouldn't be a problem.
What it, what's the approximate distance?
It's across the way, the parking lot is in front.
From the trees?
Yeah, the closest trees.
I was gonna say, it's all uh, it's a nice, I don't know.
Any concern with drinking water with the pesticides? I don't know what they're made, what kind of, what they use, if they're all natural or organic or anything like that. Is there anything that should be worried with that type of scenario?
Um, no, I wouldn't think. I mean, you know, we eat the apples that they spray, so I wouldn't assume that is a problem, but.
Well, the well's gonna be tested.
Well, right, the well's tested and the wells, I mean, they never had a problem before that I know of with pesticide in repairing.
Yeah, with a drilled well, it's pretty, it would have to be like right near the wellhead.
Yeah.
Um, but I do know they use a lot of herbicide, a fair amount of herbicide up there, so.
Yeah.
You know, it is something to, I wouldn't mind seeing some sort of statement about that.
From Will, or?
About this, you know, we can make it a condition, I think, about no spraying when the kids are there and spraying such that the reentry time can be observed.
Yeah, understandable, reasonable, makes sense.
Yeah.
Want to go through the?
I think say, yeah, you want to go through the?
Read through the conditions? We're all looking at this.
Yeah, the green page out there, yep.
Yeah, all right. Um, do you want me to read it?
DJ, you can read it or does it need somebody?
I guess, I guess I'll redo it if you will, so.
Sounds good.
Answer it. Um, so I'll just start at right at the beginning here, four point three, Shoreland District, so.
N A.
Yep. And then six point, six point three. Existing conditional user structure. Are we, we're viewing this as just a separate use entirely from uh, conditional?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is entirely, this is entirely different use for that structure.
Okay, so.
But she has documentation from the uh,
Land Trust.
Land Trust, yeah, authorized, it's a kind of.
That's great, okay.
I brought it, the Land Trust book too, if you, it's in my car to bring it, but if you wanted to reference it, if you have it.
And I think the biggest issue that the Land Trust would probably have would be just noise maybe? Of people who are recreating, sitting on top of the hill and the noise of the daycare potentially, I mean, what, what are their issues?
I mean, they, they allow wineries and breweries, I mean, yeah, the Land Trust really, uh, basically their job is just to keep it as farmland. So, and yeah, there's obviously restrictions, but it's not as invasive as you think. Um, they're, they're really awesome and they were really excited about the idea, they thought it was great, so. I don't know, but if you need anything more from them, then they'd give it, I'm sure.
I don't think we do.
We have the pen that says it.
Yeah.
We got the pen that says it last.
I think what happened with them. All right, uh, six point, six point three point three, application procedure, signed application has been submitted.
Yep.
Yes.
Plans presented for approval drawn to scale. Uh, no smaller than one inch equals fifty feet.
I didn't like, I didn't like the scale.
Too easy. There is this. Quarter inch scale equals three feet.
How are you gonna do that?
I would answer that, one inch equals twelve.
I mean, basically, do we, do we need a more substantial drawing for this application?
My opinion, I mean, we have, we have the, the overarching view, where it's going.
Yeah, right.
And this is.
And we've got this here, layout.
Right.
Yeah, I'm willing to uh, to accept, to, yeah, to accept the quarter inch to three foot scale, uh, on the drawing, on the proposed drawing layout. Unless there's any heartburn about it.
You're happy with that, Jason?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah. Yeah, that's why I wasn't saying anything.
Okay.
No, I was just letting you guys go with it.
I'm just going, going to whatever.
Yeah, I actually just go right to six point six three four.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to.
Make sure all that.
Cross all the, you can draw all the, you know. Following information has been provided. Name, size, address, and the outcome can.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, this is where we just, we want a piece of paper that says Will can.
Dave downstairs grabbing, he's reviewing on the registry deeds right now, so he's pulling something up that hopefully show that Will, the, on that, so.
The name of the proposed, what do you call them?
Apple blossom, I understand.
That's right.
Yeah, not one person.
How could I forget?
Chris Milner.
Yeah.
That's right.
Classic. You missed a good one, Gavin.
Yeah, that was, that was classic.
That was a good one.
I think you got Steve right for a second, I missed first, apple.
Put a couple S's in there instead.
Yeah.
Copy of deed or record of ownership.
Yep, coming up.
The address and map and lot number, total floor, your proposed buildings.
Yep.
Ground coverage.
Yep.
Location of each proposed building, pressure, addition.
Yes.
Dated certified peroder, survey of partial showing reference points.
Last page.
Last page.
Yep, okay. All right. Required fees have been collected.
Yes.
Okay.
And independent consultants uh, are not necessary, I think. So yeah, six point, six point three point four, review procedure public hearing. Uh, standards. A, the use will not have adverse impact on spawning ground fish, aquatic lake, bird, or other wildlife habitat.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, it will not.
With water.
B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, not in the way of the view from the top of the hill, right?
No, no, it's lower.
The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Yep.
Yes.
D, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with the performance standards in this ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we gonna have a, a sign, like any sort of road signs down by the entrance, not just a?
Like children at play type of sign?
Yeah, slow or, I mean.
That'd be either up to her or we have to talk to the town with the, with the.
With Will.
Will, yeah. I'm sure the town is not gonna invest in that, that would be something that she would probably have to, he would probably could put it up for her, but.
Might even be required by the state, I don't know.
It might, but it's not a state needed road, so if it was a state road, then they would require something like that. Where this is a town road, they're not gonna, don't think they're gonna intervene.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking to require that just because they're driving in and.
It's no problem if it had to be required.
I had a concern when we were there just because of the amount of large trucks that we see on H Road now, but I had a good sight distance from, from both directions, so I kind of waived that one. You know.
The outdoor play area is entirely fenced in.
Yeah.
Fenced in, in the back.
Yeah, it's, it's set back, pretty far from the.
It's not close to the road, yeah.
Okay. E, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations.
Yes.
Yes.
F, adequate provision for the disposable wastewater and solid waste has been made.
Yes.
Conditionally.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, everything we do is, is conditioned upon the state approval.
Right.
Okay. G, adequate permission for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made.
I don't know if diapers could be had in this.
H, a stormwater drainage system capable of handling a twenty-five year storm without adverse impact on adjacent properties has been designed.
Um, no, it has not.
Um, but we're pretty far from the property line. And. Is your, are you proposing a paving the parking area to get to gravel?
Gravel.
Gravel. I guess as long as that thing is kind of sloped away from the entrance road, so we're not getting water.
Um.
You know.
It should, I believe, again, in my car, um, there's a lot of traffic, so I just kind of ran in here. Um, it's, the drainage, because there's a slope, it was deeded, that it was in the deed that he had to have some sort of drainage system, so there already is one there. Um, should be in the deed, you have a copy of it, but.
A drainage for the property itself, for the, for the entire, for that piece of land on the, on the slope?
Yes.
Right?
Yeah, I think including the bunkhouse because they can have the bunkhouse flood.
Yep.
So there, yeah, I don't know what, I was, what.
And the drainage plan is gonna have to be, I mean, it's gonna have to pass through your office, Jason, as they continue to provide the U K, or, yeah, build the parking area and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, because if the parking area creates more runoff.
Yep.
To H Road, then it could become something that needs to be addressed.
Right, right, that's always. Are you still gonna have water catchment off of the building, or are you gonna give?
Yeah, yes, yeah. Some sort of, because that's, yeah, he gets his, it's gonna be all reconfigured, but he uses a water catching system to fill his water tank. Um, I don't want to completely get rid of that, but make it look more professional and nicer back then.
Well, okay.
You have uh, something really worth doing on that last one, stormwater.
So you want to say no on that one, that we can identify that as like a condition?
Or just the, yeah, condition that the, the park, the parking area doesn't?
Like it has to be accounted for?
Yeah, the parking area doesn't cause runoff down the road and. All right, I don't, I don't feel like we're, I mean, we're dealing with an existing building and. They're gonna catch the water off the roof, and that's, that's gonna help too.
For sure.
I don't know if we need a full, full-blown management plan, but I mean, that, that is a, a plan in itself.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made.
Yes, I would say adequate provisions have been made, based on what we just discussed, honestly.
Yeah, that's pretty similar with the parking area, just, you know, make sure the parking area doesn't wash away. J, adequate water supply to meet the demands of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes.
It'll have to be, it'll have to be.
Yeah, so.
And there is an existing well.
Yeah, so based on past performance, I do, it's gotta be checked.
Yeah. K, the provisions of buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties from detrimental features of the development such as noise, glare, um, dust, odor, and the like.
Yeah, with the exception of those two trees, everything else is remaining the same surrounding that entire building.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, and so, and you're not proposing operating outside of uh, basically uh, normal business hours. I would say yes.
Does that also include the pesticides like we were talking about?
I'm sorry?
Does that include the pesticides, says Anna, like with that, do anything to do with that pesticides? Like protection or anything like that?
Uh, she's not doing the pesticides, pesticides all would just be, they'd be for the, this other business and that kind of thing, for her.
Drift to affect children, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 no, no, for sure. I think this is more talking about like any effect that her business would have on neighbors.
Okay, her, her.
Yeah.
That's not a bad, uh, a bad thought though, that we would have some sort of potential vegetated buffer maybe at the bottom of the parking area or something that could catch drift going toward the, toward the center.
Yes.
That's not a bad thought, and it would be a fairly simple. You know, because the wind's gonna be coming in different directions, you know, supposed to be no, you know, minimal wind when they're flying, but.
Probably, I probably have to look at, like, kind of like what you're saying, though, like a time restriction, basically, like, like some kind of deal would have to be worked out, so. Probably, I probably have to look at it, like, kinda like what you said, though, like a time restriction, basically, like, like some kinda deal would have to be worked out so that, um, spraying and that kind of, any type of, uh, treatment. Uh, to the orchard itself would have to be done, uh, so many hours before children re-occupy the, uh, the building, I don't know. I, yeah, typically eight hours is, is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's also what I'm familiar with as well, but we could put that, uh, some kinda restriction in there, like a twelve-hour restriction.
Yeah, like we're talking to, I agree, I think I've noted that now that we make that a condition.
Yeah.
I think Gavin's thinking now in terms of the buffer, would it be, uh, feasible or the right thing to do to, to? Put a line at the end of the parking lot?
Mm-hmm.
Before the, the road in?
Mm-hmm.
Like, I don't know, what do you think, you get bushes or something like that?
Oh, just. I'm just going, going with the multiple ideas of some sort of buffer that would go.
How high are we thinking? Four, eight?
I mean, I don't know exactly how, how high they should be, I'm just thinking, I know, so I understand this is the effect of her business on, on others, but I'm just thinking the protection of the kids.
Yeah.
Seems like a.
Yeah.
Situation, I'm not sure the height of it, I don't know what would be best for, cause I'm not professional at that, but.
Yeah.
That's another way to set it off to use it from actually, the apple peppers.
Yeah, a vegetative buffer that, that helps to identify the perimeter of the, um, the daycare versus the, yeah, getting between a landscape lane.
I would just obviously wanna make sure that it's not gonna interfere or interfere with Will's operation right there, cause he does have peach trees right there. And getting his equipment in and out, I don't know if that's doable, to be totally honest with you, and I think just following the re-entry and spraying on weekends is probably gonna be the most best for both of us. I just don't wanna affect his operation either, so.
Well, he's not gonna need to get his equipment in your parking lot.
Right.
No, are you saying vegetation, where are you saying vegetation, I guess I'm misunderstanding.
The edge of the parking lot, um, between the parking lot and the road. Alright, so the very edge.
Your proposed parking area.
So where, how would cars get in and out, I guess I'm confused as to where it's going, I don't, I don't get it, I'm sorry.
You have an entrance, let me get your picture.
What do you guys want the vegetation for? I was trying to find something.
We're just.
I think we're back on the pesticide thing.
Just some sort of vegetative buffer between maybe like. At the bottom of the parking area, if the orchard's down here.
The driveway, the parking area is here, the driveway continues up to where they, where everybody parks to go pick the apples. You're not gonna get vegetation there. This driveway. It's gonna, cause her parking lot's gonna be situated here on lo, on somewhat of a level of ground, and Will's entrance to the ROMAC is gonna go right up past the parking lot.
Correct.
And then they park at the top of the hill.
Was your entrance not in the middle of your parking lot? Like, so the roads come in, thi- this picture shows the road, like a two-car entrance here and the road here, but I thought your parking lot was all along the road.
It's, that's the old road to go up when Gordon owned the orchard, that spot, it forked off, cause he owned the other side and where Will owns. And it forked off two ways, and that was a paved road, and it's all taped off, no vehicles are allowed up there because it's so overgrown and it's not used as a road anymore. So where it forks, that fork, where that road's not usable, is where the parking lot is aligned to.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I wasn't understanding, I apologize.
So what I was thinking probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
No.
I think a time restriction, in my opinion, it would probably be adequate with, with respect to safety. I don't, I, like, just, like you said, like, I'm not an expert in terms of like, you know, what kinda plants to grow, but.
Again, we're talking two different things.
Yeah, I know.
I think we've been talking buffer strips for, you know, runoff and things like that.
The buffer strips?
That's what I thought Gavin was talking about.
Or are, are we talking stormwater runoff?
Yeah, just to help runoff from the parking lot.
Sorry.
Which is where we were, I thought. And I, but I'm in violent agreement on, on, um, a condition on, you know, when, uh, she, she needs to establish with the orchard, so they don't spray when the kids are there. And they spray when the kids are gone, such that they can come back after the appropriate re-entry time.
Right, okay.
Just to clarify, would you want something signed by Will, um, on the pesticide schedule, that way it's him, the owner, saying this is when I'm spraying? Or is it just like my word, I don't know, do you want me to get documentation for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, something, I guess.
So it can just be him typing something and then signing it, that's the rule?
Yeah, something between the two of you.
Okay, that's fine, sure.
That was a mortgage taken, and it just shows him as the grantor, that's in his signature for like few of portraits, best I can come up with on the fly. And all of the rest of the docs right here, I just don't know if you need all twenty-five pages of it.
No. I mean, I'm okay with this. He's signed, it just says member, but he signs, that means he has the power to sign, so I'm okay with this, so you're covered for the, she will consume.
Uh, in terms of, uh, additional provisions for stormwater runoff and everything, I think, like, based on what we saw, I, I don't, I don't think additional, I don't think additional buffering needs to be applied, uh, for this conditional use per se. I agree.
Well, if, if it's stormwater, if it does become an issue, we'll address it at that point.
Right.
If the new impervious surfaces doesn't, need the water washed up the road, and that's something that will be addressed.
There'll have to be a solution made at that point, yeah.
And they, yeah, and they can, so.
Other than that, it's an orchard, it's pretty well managed here.
All right. So we're down to, go.
L.
All, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met.
Yes.
M, archaeological and historic resources designated in the comprehensive plan will be protected.
N A? The building's not getting demolished and the area is all, yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar of any archaeological or historical, uh, sites of historical significance in that area.
It's either yes or N A, I mean.
N A.
All right, N A, I'm okay with that.
Okay, should we have a hearing? That's, uh. I'm just checking for the standards. And we have come up with a couple of conditions. If there's any, is there anything that would?
No, let's see.
Hold it back from, from boarding on this tonight.
From, from approval, uh, what are the conditions that we got so far, just the, the only one I can.
Provide a schedule for the pesticides for the spring.
Yeah, yeah, schedule for the pesticides.
And then we could put a condition in there, it doesn't have to be on the plan, I know, but that, if the stormwater runoff does increase, uh, it'll be addressed to minimize any impact.
I guess the state's gonna do it, but we talked about a condition that the well and septic system had to be assessed and then acted on accordingly, based on the results. No spraying, is this one, you just said no spraying when children are present, and spraying such that re-entry times is, uh, is observed.
I don't know, we can make a condition that it needs state approval.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to anyway.
I don't know, it's rhetorical, it's gonna.
It's, it'll have to.
Yeah.
Uh, and if the septic fails, it has to be replaced or, or repaired, so, um, that's, that's a state standard as well, so.
I think the only additional thing is probably the, uh, the pesticide, uh, time that, that we can put on there.
And you're not gonna operate on the weekends?
No.
What were your hours?
Uh, six thirty A M to six P M.
And that's a condition.
Yeah, it's, it's in here too, and that's why I asked about the weekends. Guess you wanted to expand those hours now, so you're gonna have to follow it a bit later.
I think six thirty to six is fair, that's a good, that's a, that's a good.
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, well, I'm a mom, so I.
That's great.
Yeah, relate to daycare's not staying openly enough for working parents, so.
For sure. Yeah, that's already identified my application.
You antici, you anticipate, um, kids doing like before school and after school?
Yeah, when I met.
So you think that the school bus will be stopping there at the bottom of the?
Yeah, so it can be a bus stop, um. I don't know yet, it's hard to say, but when I met with United Way, they really wanted to partner with Acton School in the state to eventually try to do, cause Acton School has limited before and after care, I know Barnard does it right now, I think, but. Um, I mean, I don't know, it's kind of up, everything's still kind of up in the air, um, but maybe down the road, it could become a bus stop for before and after care, I'm just not sure yet.
That would, it wouldn't hurt probably to get a, a sign on the road if it was a bus stop.
Yes, yeah.
So maybe just a condition that says if the school, cause then the kids are right by the road too.
Right.
And the school bus is there, and we've got the gravel trucks and such, so I think if the school bus is gonna be stopping, I mean, you should get a.
We don't, we don't know yet, though, right?
Right, right.
If, like, if it does, that would be, that would be coming in, we'd be talking about this later, if that.
Okay, yeah, so I would have to, yeah, come back for something like that.
If that become, if that becomes something that you, that, that, that becomes a thing.
Yeah.
Well, we could put it in now, just. If it becomes a bus stop, they, we require a.
A sign that says bus stop?
Yeah, and she wouldn't have to come back. I mean.
That's fine with me.
I don't know.
Sure.
Simplifies things.
Uh, and then the only other thing that I was thinking was just making sure we identified that clear signage needs to be put up to, uh, clearly delineate the orchard side from the, uh, the daycare. So what, in accordance with the ordinance and everything, but, uh, minimum, minimum one sign, obviously. Uh, yeah, in order, yeah, in accordance with the ordinance to identify, uh, a clear delineation between orchard and. Daycare. Other than that. I have nothing else. Anybody? Nothing else? Ready to put this up for a vote?
Yeah, I think so. Looking for a motion.
Yeah. All right, I will make a motion that the board approved a conditional use permit with conditions. Uh, Emily Cody, eleven forty-nine H Road, MAP two twenty, lot zero zero two, the application for conditional use of a daycare with the following conditions. That the schedule of the orchard, uh, pesticide application is deconflicted with, uh, daycare attendance by a minimum of twelve hours. So from time of application to time of children re-entering the facility. Uh, that the well and, uh, that the well and septic system are evaluated and any issues, uh, that are identified.
Yeah.
By the state are reasonably addressed and brought back in a, into code. And that adequate sign, signage in accordance with the ordinance, uh, to, uh, will identify, uh, clearly identify the daycare delineated from, uh, the ROMAC Orchard Business. To avoid any confusion between patrons. And that any additional signage in the case if the daycare becomes a bus stop for Acton Elementary School, a sign on the road, uh, on the main road will be, uh, installed in accordance with the ordinance. Yeah?
Can I ask a question? You, the, uh, spraying condition you levy, uh, had a specific twelve hours, if her, if her kids are there until eighteen hundred six. And she opens again at six thirty, is a very small window here, would it comply with what you put on?
Weekend, I think it's kind of what I, is identified, if I recall, what you said, right?
Yes, but I would like to confirm, I, like I said, I do not wanna interfere with his business and how he does things, so I can call him right when I leave and whatever, I, I don't, I don't know, they didn't, uh, come today either, but. So, um, it's standard eight hours, so I couldn't imagine that it would have to be any more than that, I mean, cause it has re-entry of eight hours, so. I don't, I don't know.
Well, I'd offer the board that we, the condition be there be no spraying when kids are present, children are present, and that the spray timing be such that, um, the re-entry times can be observed. Before the children return, so in other words, if it is during the week and it's an eight-hour re-entry time, it'd be done ten o'clock at night or whatever the date is, yes.
Okay. All right, I would say, I would modify that just to say in accordance with manufacturer.
Yeah.
Recommendation?
Yes.
Pesticide manufacturer recommendation? Okay. All right.
And then if the stormwater increases too.
Got it, okay.
No, we got that, Dave's got that.
Got all that, Dave?
Right as we go.
All right, so the, so the time from la, so no spraying while children are present, and from the time of the last spray to the time when children re-entry, right? That'll, that the, uh, no children will be present, uh, in accordance with manufacturer recommendation of the pesticide, re-entry to the, to the facility itself.
The re-entry, the recommended re-entry manufacturers, re-entry times observed.
Exactly, that any additional stormwater produced by, uh, the remodeling of the facility, uh, will be addressed, um, as you continue to apply for, uh, requisite codes.
Can you shut up that written back?
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna, you wanna read that back?
It's not the base of my, I take it right from the.
See if you can get the gist.
So I've got your schedule of pesticide application will happen when kids are not present, and the re-entry times will be observed by manufacturer specifications. Again, stormwater will be addressed if runoff is increased. Uh, signage for doing orchard from daycare and additional signage will be installed if it becomes a bus stop in accordance with the ordinance. Am I missing anything?
Sounds good.
Well, will the septic system be evaluated and addressed if there's any issues?
That's a state requirement, so.
Yeah.
You wanna go on a second now?
On a second.
All right, all my favor. All right.
Um, so I'll just have someone drop that off next week, so Jason and Dave. Um, and then my question is, do you guys write some sort of letter, cause I need something for the state?
We will.
Okay, awesome, fun, yeah.
And then we'll have, uh, the chairman sign it, as always. And then we'll have the chairman sign it as always.
Alright, thank you.
John, find the other page from you and Dave. You're gonna put this whole thing in their packet. Alright, so old business. It looks like Julie Vanel is here to speak to us about her uh proposed changes to the zoning ordinance.
So I'm Julie Vanel, and I've lived in the town of Acton for forty-eight years on the mainland with my husband. And I'm concerned about um gravel pits in our area, in our town, as well as um several concerned citizens that are also here tonight. So I'd like to propose in addition to the current zoning ordinance under mineral extraction industry performance standards, section five point nine, point two, point D, point one, to add a minimum distance from any current residential dwelling of three hundred feet. The Acton CEO has the most complaints and spends considerable time with Acton residents who are close to mineral extraction activities. This is because currently the ordinance specifies that only an extraction operation needs to be more than one hundred feet from the property line and no distance designation noted for homes with smaller lots and therefore can be quite close to extraction facilities. Mineral extraction can be very noisy, dusty, and disturbing. We all move to Acton for the open space, quiet, clean environment, and ability to appreciate nature and these attributes of our town. I think the planning board should consider if these attributes are being threatened and consequently the character of our town and property values in general. Our town has areas with much higher population density than it did in the past. Um, in the past, past, there are many homes that were only occupied for a few weeks in the summer and are now occupied for several months or for the entire year. All of southern Maine is also seeing an increase in new home development, and our, our town is changing, but can still support mineral extraction if it doesn't pose health, environmental, noise, and traffic issues. The uncontrolled spread of extraction industries near residential areas poses a threat to the safety, health, and quality of life of families. Many communities have been adversely affected by the proximity of such operations, operations, which often lead to increased noise, air, and water pollution, and it compromises the integrity of residential areas and threatens the well-being of the inhabitants. Research, research shows that living close to extraction sites can increase rates of respiratory issues due to declining air quality, and that's from the EPA. And noise pollution from constant operations disrupts the peaceful environment of homes and residential's, residence, mental health, and that's from the National Institute of Health. Neighbors deserve a regulatory framework that protects their homes and health. Therefore, proposing a mandatory minimum distance between extraction industries and residential areas will significantly, significantly reduce the potential for harm. And such measures will align with best practices seen in other states um that have success successfully implemented similar regulations. By amending the current zoning ordinance to include these guidelines, we ensure a balanced approach that allows industrial development while safeguarding guarding the community's well-being. I urge the planning board to consider this addition to the zoning ordinance to protect the peace and safety of our neighbors. And our neighborhoods. So I, as a planning board, I know what you do regularly. You know, I've been sitting at them a couple of these meetings and you approve new ordinances um and permits. But also, is there a bigger picture that you're thinking about what the future of our town could be? Um, I think that that's something that you should consider as well, besides just the immediate um ordinance and permits that need to be you know, acted upon on a day, on a weekly basis. Our town is changing and development is inevitable, but I think we have a, we, you people, you know, have a certain um responsibility and um the option right now to, to give some guidance for where our town's going. And I'd just like you to consider that, and as well as there's several citizens not only here tonight, but who I've talked to that have similar concerns.
So I'm just gonna make a quick correction. I'm not trying to do it. I just gotta get pulled out here. Planning board doesn't approve the or, they, they, they make an amendment and then the town approves it, so.
Right.
It would be up to the board to move it forward to town meeting and then the town could approve it.
I understand, right, right. Any comments? Any cons, any similar concerns from the planning board?
Well, I think we've heard similar concerns in the past when there have been um changes made to this part of the ordinance. I'd be interested to know what the other states are, so we could look at it that he mentioned have implemented this. And then just one other thing, you said we should be looking forward and, and thinking about the way our town approach should be, or the way the future of the town should be managed, and that's really not our job either. I mean, we do individual ordinance changes that come up from people like you. But there's something called the comprehensive plan.
Right.
That is run by the selectmen. They'll probably create a committee that does exactly what you're looking for. It, it looks at the town holistically and um interviews a lot of people, surveys a lot of people to get their take on um, you know, the way we should go in the future.
Right.
You know, is this something we want to continue in the future? We're, Lamo would do for that in Acton. It hasn't been done for a while. It's something I've been asking for, for a while. But again, it's not us, it's the selectmen.
So do you advise um advocating the comprehen, uh, another comprehensive plan that addresses this?
Well, that would address the town.
In general, yes, but address this issue as well.
For everything, you know, rentals are a big, there are a lot of big issues. Uh, and it would give us current data on how to change ordinances based on what the town feels and the research that is done.
Right.
They're supposed to be done in ten years, I think. Us was last done, I think in oh four.
Oh four?
Yeah, maybe oh.
Published, it was published in oh four.
Published in oh four, so the, and the data then is a couple of years old.
Took a couple of years to get done.
So, so we're due for another comprehensive plan?
That's not to say that we can't, you've come forward with a suggestion. Um, it's not to say we can't work on it and try to craft something and then go through the process, which is a public hearing, which I'm sure will be well attended. And then as Jason said, ultimately, it's a vote at the town hall whether it may affect.
So what would my next step be, or what would your next step be?
Um, did you, I thought, did you draft a proposal?
Just, I guess, is this considered a proposal? I haven't, I haven't, that I've just discussed.
I haven't.
I haven't written anything that submitted to Jason.
She, I have a proposal, so we've had some conversation back.
Page fifty-five, performance standards would be number one. As far as I can tell, uh, the proposal is to add a single line into this paragraph. Maybe after the after the fifty feet stating that you know, no extractions within three hundred feet of a residence or something like that. I mean, it certainly would be helpful to get a printed copy of your proposal for this, the changes to this.
Sure.
Paragraph.
Yep.
And I think the, the next step is that the, everyone on the board needs to consider it. Think about it, because when you came to us before, um, I don't think Henry was here. John, John wasn't here.
Three members.
Tucker wasn't here.
Right.
Oh.
I think, right.
I wasn't here.
And Roger, okay, I was the only one who was here.
Yeah.
So um, so it, you know, these four members need to consider it.
So, can you, would you consider it right this evening, or do you go, do you meet otherwise?
Um, I think they would consider it, you know, on their own time and then you would have, you would probably want to come back to the another, the next meeting or another meeting, so that we could actually discuss it in your presence, cause things like this, it's just so much easier to discuss it when you're here.
I understand, yeah, and you want to think about it.
Yeah, and if we could get up an actual.
I have, I'm just gonna say, I'm trying to thumb through my emails right now. But we have, we've had some discussion, Julie and I, of how to what to use for verbiage and how to go above doing it, and just, you know, find it.
And I noticed that you did change it from five hundred to three hundred.
Well, that was a discussion, and I think, I wanted to think, you know, what do you people think would be reasonable? I, I'm no expert, um, and it was, we just thought maybe three hundred was easier to swallow?
Any number that, that gets put forward needs to be evidence-based in some form or fashion, alright? We can't just pull numbers uh out of thin air, whether it's three hundred, five hundred, a thousand, you know? Whatever, whatever the number is, should be evidence-based. Uh, you stated some NIH studies and those types of things.
Right, but there was no distance specific, and also.
So on the other hand, sorry, excuse me, the other hand, to John's point, if you have uh concrete examples of like other states ordinances that have implemented, based on, this seems to be a standard that's been implemented for these types of reasons.
Right, right.
That's also, that's also.
I can work on that.
Type of, type of thing.
Yeah.
Um, and then that gives a lot of ammunition for uh for your proposal to the change to the ordinance. And then basically, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, John, basically, we would, you know, agree upon, you know, whatever the correct verbiage of the ordinance change is, and then put it forward to the town vote and basically.
Well, it's a process, so we would, we would have a lawyer check the language.
Yep, of course.
Because it's an ordinance change.
Right.
Then we would have to have a town hall and have, you know.
Make sure it's all.
Feedback from.
Public hearing, yeah.
Yeah, public hearing.
Yep.
Thank you. To get feedback on it, that may or may not drive changes, and then it's gonna go to the selectmen for their up or down vote. I mean, I guess it would still go to the town, um, but the selectmen would vote, you know, up or down on it, as would the Warren Finings Committee.
Right, but ultimately, it would still go to the town, uh, what, and it would just be.
Final approval is.
Hundred percent. Yeah, and it would just, and it would just be, it would just be identified as.
There will be a secret town, but special town, a secret, a special town meeting, I think, it's gonna be somewhere in the September ballpark, I think. Um, for a, a vote on a new fire, an ambulance, sheriff's car and, and other things, but. So there might be one coming up soon, might not, not have to wait until the next.
Sure. Yep.
Fiscal year comes around.
Okay.
Um, so just an idea of what some of the verbiage that she was proposing was um minimum three hundred foot setback from any residential dwelling existing at the time of adoption of this amendment, as well as as all future extraction sites must adhere to the three hundred residential setback. Um, as well as all the other performance standards outlined in mineral extraction section of this ordinance.
Three hundred feet from a dwelling, not the property line?
Three hundred feet from, it was a dwelling.
True.
Yeah, because some properties, yeah, it's not the property, it was residential structure, wasn't uh an existing residential. So you, you can't foresee, oh, well, he might plot a house here, or, you know, there's certain things, but it was at the time, like, at the time of the adoption of this ordinance, uh, all future uh mineral extractions would maintain a three hundred foot setback from a, from a residential dwelling. That's what we had talked about.
Right, right.
Uh. What if a homeowner had a small lot and wanted to rebuild and it was within?
There's a lot of questions with this one.
That was one of the things we.
Uh, you know, there's, there's a lot, that's gonna.
Restrict residential growth in some way, and how do we, how do we?
You're gonna have a lot of positives to this one, you're gonna have a lot of people coming with negatives. That, it's just like every other one that we do.
Oh, it's always.
You know, it's, it, um, I do, I do say there, there are some people here that, that live pretty close to, to mineral extraction places, and come winter time, when the foliage is gone, it doesn't really help them as much. The hundred foot offer. It's noisier.
Oh, I'm saying the better.
Oh, yeah, so there is a lot of good with this proposal. I think it's just gonna be hard for um a lot of the people in this town to, to swallow it, because of their professions.
And mineral extraction counts as a commercially operation, is that, is that right?
Commercial A B C, it, well, it could be, pretty much, it could be anywhere. It could be anywhere, but the, but the show lines up. Pretty much.
Okay.
But you did catch what John was saying, that, that putting that three hundred foot offer could be strict, or someone could build a residence in the future.
Well, does it? Cause you're not changing, you're not changing the residential ordinance. You're not saying that a, that a house couldn't be put within three hundred feet of a extraction facility. Is that reasonable?
Well, that's not clear.
That someone could.
That, that, you have to really pin down.
I guess you, I guess, I guess you, they'd be going to Jason to get a permit, and he'd say, well, you're within three hundred feet. Do we need a variance for this, or can we can we pass it or not? And can we still pass it? Because there's not, that's, that's not in the ordinance, or not in the residential ordinance.
Well, it said, they said hypothetically, somebody did put, you know, this thing was adopted, somebody did put a residence within three hundred feet.
Yep.
How does that affect the mineral extraction where perhaps they haven't extracted that edge of their property yet? Is it gonna be, you know, how is that gonna play out, where is it all of a sudden they can't access that gravel where you know, like, there's kind of a gray area of like, what, what would happen? I, I'm not against what you're saying, I'm just, I really want it to be clear that we're not coming up with some convoluted.
And isn't it clearly defined when the extraction facility, extraction operation gets their permit, whatever that property line is? Isn't that clearly defined?
The property line, the property line, yeah.
Yeah, well, then they couldn't inch up if it's, or, or go closer if that's within three hundred feet of a, of a residential dwelling.
But what Gavin's saying is if they're behind the property line and they're getting their gravel up to the property line, they could potentially now be coming within the three hundred feet.
But isn't, isn't that a, isn't that a def, a defined spot, that they are a defined line, that they can only go a certain distance by the, by whatever the permit says?
It's not as defined as you think. They do some surveys to tell them there's gravel here, there's sand here, but it's not. I'm not in that industry, but it's, to me, it's not exact size.
I think, I think that Jason would have to, if somebody wanted to put a residence within that three hundred feet of an approved gravel pad, Jason would tell them they couldn't put their residence there, which is kind of.
But that's not, that's not in the ordinance. That doesn't, in the residential.
If we put this thing in the ordinance.
I think she's trying to do, it's, I think she's trying to restrict the operation, not the residential structures.
No, I, I, I understand what we're trying, what it's trying to be done. I'm trying, I just wanted to, I don't want to end up with some conflicting.
This is where, honestly, this is where the lawyer comes in, uh, is making sure that the verbiage is, is such that these types of restrictions won't become won't inhibit uh residential use in any way, in any way, shape, or form.
Right.
And then maybe we could find an example, I think John was saying this earlier, an example of another state or town that has put in verbiage similar to this, and how they worded it.
Okay.
And how that worked legally, and would that, you know, could we duplicate what they did to make it?
Preferably even another municipality in Maine.
Right, right.
So when we make, when we made the changes in twenty twenty-three? At one of the greater setbacks, I think it was the one, it was either a hundred fifty, or most people were just doing a hundred. And it was from a property line. It wasn't from, they did nothing, they didn't they didn't acknowledge residential structures in their setbacks or anything like that. It's, everything was usually set by the property line and, and, I mean. So, but I could have missed something, so I mean, if you guys could.
I could do some more research.
Yeah.
Me, me, if, if it was Maine, that would be great, but even if it's a surrounding.
Yeah, even if it's surrounding, anything you can find.
You're gonna find a lot of places where there's a lot of water body. You're gonna find the most gravel, obviously, if you look at Acton.
Right.
So if you look at municipalities or other areas within the state or other states that have a lot of water bodies, um, usually you might be able to find something.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll do some research. Any other questions? Is there any other concerns that I can address? Any other questions, or any other concerns that I can address?
No, the concern is pretty well noted, so at this point, it's clearly identifying, like, your, your suggested verbiage in terms of like the specific change to the ordinance, this section, this, this number right here, I want to put these words in, take these words out, or do whatever, based on, and here's why, right? As we, we got the, we have, we understand why you want to do it, now, we want, now, now the concrete, that needs to be in there.
And does it have to be my exact words, or would it be a good idea for, for you people that are more professional to, to?
It's a starting point.
Give us the start.
Give us our starting point.
Right, right, because I, I think your feedback is, is, you know, is important as well, or is more important.
Yeah, I mean, we can debate all sorts of things.
Yeah.
But give us what your.
Sure.
Give us what your, give us your hopes and dreams.
Okay.
Yeah, give us what your preferred, give us your preferred outlook.
I don't know, I think it'd be better to do something that's reasonable, that, like you say, it's.
For sure.
Go to town vote.
But give us your preference.
Okay.
Give us your preference, give us evidence on why, and then that'll be our starting point, and then we can move forward from there.
Okay, great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else going on? Not, not right now, next meeting, we have a greatest practical extent, we also have. We do have a sidewalk for. Live Free Development on, on Taddle Street, thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth street.
The Lower Mouson thing?
Yes, Lower Mouson, that one is on the.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, thank you, Dave, and they'll come in following after that, I guess with more discussion.
Yes, I've seen.
I'm waiting to find out what's happening with the.
Is it five o'clock?
Five o'clock, yeah. I did have another application come in for the, for the MAPEs, storage and tiny homes. Right now, what I'm, I, might be impossible, waiting, she's gonna let me know at the beginning of next week if they're gonna be on the agenda for the seventeenth. So.
Is she updating pick one?
That's what, we're trying to figure out which way they're gonna proceed with it. That's, that's really the major thing right now. I don't want to get into too many fine details because she's not here, but I'm just waiting on them.
Okay.
As a vet, is, that's all I have right now, and then the, the, I'm sure she'll be back next time with some different verbiage, or, or something in concrete.
Is there a street address for Taddle Street?
Map and lot.
Okay, I'll just take it out of minutes.
Yeah, I don't really have an address, if you go all the way down to, if you go all the way down to thirty-fourth street, you take a left before, instead of going around with a pencil, you'll go, there's a, it's pretty much just gonna come to a fence or a dead end, and it's thirty-fifth street, thirty-fourth, thirty-fifth street, I can double check before. You guys, you want to look at Mike?
On the webpage, the agenda, the site visit address? There's no address.
There's not an address.
There's no.
That's on the. So I'll show you, we'll find it.
Pretty much.
I think they're, they want us.
They still have to prove that they can do it.
They want us to go walk it, show us whether they can, can.
Yeah, I just, they feel that if we walk it, we'll have a better.
They, they, they want to.
Rescinding of what they're trying to do.
Discuss the location of the.
Yeah. So their property is. If you guys want to take a peek at my thing, you'll be able to see it pretty good, you're gonna come in, Lower Mouson, you're gonna come in from Henry Millside, down here. Tents wherever it was, somewhere in that ballpark, it's actually over here, and so this is Taddle Street, it's gonna bring you up. Taddle Street's gonna bring you to here, and you're gonna come up, this is thirty-fourth street, thirty-fifth does this, that property, there's an entrance to that property right here.
Okay.
If that helps you.
But Taddle Street goes along that property as well.
It also goes up and over, so.
But we're not even going.
Jump on, so.
But we're probably not even looking at this stuff.
Not right now, I think we're just looking at their open space, that's a big property, I don't, I don't have any really intentions of walking the whole property right now.
No, not this stuff.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, and if anybody really needs to find it, and they, they don't, they can meet me here, follow me there.
Did you watch that meeting?
I did not, I just read.
Yes.
I don't know, I think we're, we're good for seventeenth, same one, meeting after.
Waiting on you, John.
I'm making motion for you, John, Mr. John.
Second.
On my favor?